Okay, today is May 18th, 2021, and I am going to convene the regular and special meeting of the City Council of San Clemente tonight. And then I am also adjourning the regular meeting to six o'clock.
I think it's a special meeting.
Uh, hold on a second. Adjourn.
The special meeting gets recessed to six?
No, the special meetings...
Right now.
Right now.
Yes.
The regular meeting will be recessed.
So I'm adjourning the regular meeting to six o'clock.
Sorry, Mayor. Joanne corrected me on that.
To recess?
It's a recess.
Thank you.
That's easier for me.
Okay. So tonight, I am convening the regular and special meeting scheduled tonight and recessing the regular meeting to six o'clock. Madam Clerk, will you take the roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson is absent. Councilmember Noblock.
Here.
Mayor Protem James.
Here.
And Mayor Ward.
Present. Do we have any public comments for closed session?
We do not.
Okay. So, Council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to a special meeting closed session.
Oh, a second. Before you do that, could I just announce that under Item B and C, there is one case in each category that involves TCA and development impact fees.
All right. Thank you, City Attorney. So we have a motion by Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protem James and a second by Councilmember Noblock.
I think it was, uh...
Oh, I already said it, so we're going to stay with that order. Thank you.
Okay, so who made the motion?
Uh, Mayor Protem James.
Seconded by Councilmember Noblock.
Yes, almost instantaneously.
Okay.
We're getting good.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock.
Aye.
Mayor Protem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Carrie Sporo.
All right.
Hello. 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 Okay. Okay. Haha. Oops. Oops. Hello. Hello. Mr. Brower, I think we're ready.
Stream is live.
All right, I'm going to call the meeting of May 18th, 2021 to order. Madam Clerk, will you please take a roll, call vote?
Yes. Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Here.
Councilmember Nobla?
Here.
Mayor Potem James?
Here.
And Mayor Ward?
Present. Councilmember Duncan, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, we don't have an invocation. Madam Clerk, before we start our meeting, there was something that we were going to do at the end of our meeting today, but we see the family of Bill Hart here, so that we would like to do it at the beginning of the meeting.
And so if I may just say a few things.
Could you please speak into the mic?
Sure, sorry about that. If I could just say a few things. Over the past four years, Bill Hart has become a great friend of mine. But for me to say that doesn't put me in any special category. Bill Hart was a friend to every person in this town, and he was an amazing individual. The hours he has dedicated to this city, to this community, to the people of this city are absolutely unparalleled. He's an amazing individual. I just want to go over a few things that he has been involved in over the past 25 years. Derail the rail, derail the trail. The watershed task force. The general plan advisory committee. The coastal advisory commission. Recently, friends of San Clemente. Peer pride. That doesn't include his involvement with the Scouts. His sons, Andy and Rob, are sitting here in the corner today. They went through Scouts with their father. The only negative thing I would have to say about Bill Hart is he's a Raiders fan. But I wasn't able to convince him otherwise. He bled silver and black. And also, this is so hard. I could talk about all the things that he's done for the community, but the thing that's most important is his devotion to his wife, Kristy, and to his two sons. His devotion to family was amazing as well. Kristy has asked me to bring up one thing, and it's got me into the habit of it, and that is giving blood. While Bill was ill, the last I heard, he had received 35 units of blood. And the one thing Bill wanted everyone to do was donate blood. Not necessarily in his name, just donate blood so other people in need of blood could benefit from that. For me, I now have it on my calendar once a month to go to Hoag and Irvine and dedicate a unit of blood. And if just a few of us would do that, that would make Bill very happy. And the last thing I'm going to say, and then I'm going to ask for a moment of silence. The last thing I'm going to say is, over the weekend, when Bill's friend, my friend, Kenny Nielsen, called on Saturday morning and told me that Bill's time on this earth was going to be short, it compelled me to do a little research. And I'm going to paraphrase something. And for those of us who are baby boomers or older, we might remember a British actor by the name of James Mason. On his headstone, I'm paraphrasing, I'm going to use Bill's name. Never say in grief that Bill is gone. Rather, say in thankfulness that we are grateful that we had Bill and we knew Bill. And I think Bill would want us to remember him that way. And with that, everyone, I'm going to call for a moment of silence. At that point, the mayor will have a presentation to Kristy, and so if we could just bow our heads and be thankful for what we all have and remember Bill. Thank you.
So Mayor Potem, we are going to adjourn this meeting in Bill Hart's memory and honor him, but because the family is here, I would like to say what we are going to say at the end of the meeting for their benefit and ask Madam Clerk that these comments be added to the end of our meeting adjournment for the record. San Clemente lost Bill Hart, a community icon, on May 15th, 2021. For 22 years, Bill worked to make San Clemente a better place to live, work, and play. Bill was especially devoted to maintaining the quality of San Clemente's beaches and ocean, as was demonstrated by his long-term service on the city's Coastal Advisory Committee, Watershed Task Force, and his contributions toward the creation of San Clemente's Beach Trail with such efforts known as derail the trail, derail the rail, which for most people, if you don't know that, that stopped the double-tracking of the railroad on our coastline. In addition to his coastal advocacy, Bill served his community tirelessly on the city's Wall of Recognition Committee, Public Safety Task Force, and he co-chaired the General Plan Advisory Committee. And that's where I first met Bill Hart. Bill recently served as Friends of San Clemente and on Peer Pride. Bill's heart was always to his family, Scouts, and of course, the Raiders. I extend heartfelt condolences to Bill's wife, Kristy, and his two sons, Bob and Andy. Your sorrow is shared by many. This meeting is being adjourned in the memory of Bill Hart. And Mayor Potem, would you like to go with me to present flowers from the city to? And it's got me into the habit of it. And that is giving blood. While Bill was ill, the last I heard, he had received 35 units of blood. And the one thing Bill wanted everyone to do was donate blood. Not necessarily in his name, just donate blood so other people in need of blood could benefit from that. For me, I now have it on my calendar once a month to go to Hoag and Irvine and dedicate a unit of blood. And if just a few of us would do that, that would make Bill very happy. And the last thing I'm going to say, and then I'm going to ask for a moment of silence. The last thing I'm going to say is, over the weekend, when Bill's friend, my friend, Kenny Nielsen called on Saturday morning and told me that Bill's time on this earth was going to be short, it compelled me to do a little research. And I'm going to paraphrase something. And for those of us who are baby boomers or older, we might remember a British actor by the name of James Mason. On his headstone, I'm paraphrasing, I'm going to use Bill's name. Never say in grief that Bill is gone. Rather, say in thankfulness that we are grateful that we had Bill and we knew Bill. And I think Bill would want us to remember him that way. And with that, everyone, I'm going to call for a moment of silence. At that point, the mayor will have a presentation to Christie. And so if we could just bow our heads and be thankful for what we all have and remember Bill. Thank you.
So Mayor Pretend, we are going to adjourn this meeting in Bill Hart's memory and honor him, but because the family is here, I would like to say what we are going to say at the end of the meeting for their benefit and ask, Madam Clerk, that these comments be added to the end of our meeting adjournment, for the record. San Clemente lost Bill Hart, a community icon, on May 15th, 2021. For 22 years, Bill worked to make San Clemente a better place to live, work, and play. Bill was especially devoted to maintaining the quality of San Clemente's beaches and ocean, as was demonstrated by his long-term service on the city's Coastal Advisory Committee, Watershed Task Force, and his contributions toward the creation of San Clemente's Beach Trail with such efforts known as derail the trail, derail the rail, which for most people, if you don't know that, that stopped the double-tracking of the railroad on our coastline. In addition to his coastal advocacy, Bill served his community tirelessly on the city's Wall of Recognition Committee, Public Safety Task Force, and he co-chaired the General Plan Advisory Committee, and that's where I first met Bill Hart. Bill recently served as Friends of San Clemente and on Peer Pride. Bill's heart was always to his family, Scouts, and of course, the Raiders. I extend heartfelt condolences to Bill's wife, Christie, and his two sons, Bob and Andy. Your sorrow is shared by many. This meeting is being adjourned in the memory of Bill Hart. And Mayor Pretend, would you like to go with me to present flowers from the city to Christie? All right, Madam Clerk, what of our next item?
The next item is the roll call.
Yeah.
Okay, next item is the toll road update.
I'm sorry, do we have any presentations before that? I'm looking for my.
You could do the special presentations first.
Since I'm seeing everyone here, can we do that first?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead, counsel, and go to the podium for that. It's a little different.
The first is a presentation of a proclamation for National Beach Safety Week. Presentation of proclamation to marine safety.
Okay, I'm seeing Marine Safety Officer Ian Burton is with us. And we haven't been doing this where we're at the podium. This is our first time. And I would just like to read the proclamation that the city is providing and then see if Mr. Burton would like to make any comments. The proclamation states, whereas the beautiful coastal beaches of San Clemente represent a world-renowned recreational resource, and whereas residents and visitors alike are drawn to these beaches by the millions each year for water and beach activities, and whereas the aquatic environment has dangers that can be effectively managed through public awareness and the vigilance of professional lifeguards, and whereas for reasons of public safety, an annual reminder of the joys and hazards associated with the aquatic environment are appropriate at the commencement of the busy summer beach season, and whereas residents and visitors alike must remember to learn to swim, swim near a lifeguard, swim with a buddy, check with the lifeguards, use sunscreen and drink water, obey posted signs and flags, keep the beach and water clean, learn rip current safety, enter water feet first, always, and wear a life jacket. Now, therefore, I, Kathy Ward, the mayor of San Clemente, acting on behalf of the city council, and the citizens of San Clemente, do hereby proclaim May 24th through May 31st, 2021, as National Beach Safety Week, and urge all residents and visitors using our beaches to enjoy themselves at the beach this year while taking appropriate measures to protect themselves and their children. And I would ask Marine Safety Officer Burton, do you have any comments to make?
Thank you very much, Mayor Ward and council members. Sounds like that plaque pretty much had my entire speech verbatim. Stole a little bit of my thunder there, but thank you so much for taking the time to recognize National Beach Safety Week. The lifeguards down here in San Clemente, we're gearing up for an exciting summer. We're looking forward to the warmer weather and warmer ocean temps ahead, so thank you so much for recognizing us. And obviously, it's our pleasure to serve the community and our visitors that we get each year. So if I can just highlight three safety tips for all beachgoers, obviously, the rip current awareness and knowing how to escape rip currents is key. But we always encourage folks to come down, and if you're going to swim, swim near an open lifeguard tower. We even encourage folks, come over and talk to the lifeguard. Ask the lifeguard if you're new to the area, where is a safe place to swim? Maybe there's a better spot to surf or boogie board. Also, know your limits. And then, last but not least, alcohol in the ocean, don't mix, so please swim sober. And thank you again for taking the time to recognize us, and we look forward to a safe and enjoyable summer. So thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going into Memorial Weekend, and this is the start of it, and it's exciting this year to be able to welcome everyone back. At this time, I would like to ask our staff from Public Works to come up. Probably ask you to say something also, if you want to. So, the city of San Clemente, we would like to recognize our Public Works Department and all the work that you do. And we're going to declare this week, May 16th through 22nd, National Public Works Week. It's very true that if without Public Works, our city would collapse. You all keep everything running. There's a lot to our city, and we all know, we all know what you do, but I don't think everyone else does, and they just wonder how it all happens. But at the end of this, I'm going to ask everyone to reach out to you. So, the proclamation, whereas the city Public Works and Utilities Departments focus on providing infrastructure, facilities, and maintenance services that are of vital importance to a sustainable and resilient community and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of San Clemente, whereas the city's infrastructure, facilities, parks, beaches, utilities, and maintenance services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who make up the Public Works Department and the Utilities Department. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, businesses, and civic leaders in the city of San Clemente to expand their knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs serving our community, and whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I, Kathy Ward, the mayor of San Clemente, do hereby proclaim May 16th through 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week, and encourage all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies throughout the country in recognizing our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees for the contributions they make to protecting our city's health, safety, and quality of life. And I would like to give you this proclamation, and thank you for all that you do. And I'm just going to ask the public that anytime you see our trucks or our guys out and they're digging a ditch somewhere and trying to fix a water line, anything like that, give them a shout out and a wave because they're working hard to keep the city going. Is there anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just want to say, Mayor Ward and members of the city council, thank you very much for this acknowledgement. I'm just a very small part of an awesome team in the Public Works Department. And on behalf of everyone in Public Works, I just want to say thank you for this acknowledgement. And I can assure you that we'll continue to do our best as we serve the members of the San Clemente community as well as fellow city staff members. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. It's nice to see you guys out.
And Mayor, if I may, just to point out, because they're probably a little shy, we have Steve Fritsch, who was present. He is our Maintenance Inspector Coordinator in our Public Works Maintenance Division. And then Tyler Langill, who was our Utility Mechanic too, as well. And Steve, I want to give a shout out because the pier bathroom was Steve's project and he worked with Peer Pride. And while I agree, Steve's comments, it takes a team to be successful. I appreciate Steve being here today because he really helped in that project. And Tyler is instrumental in maintaining our Utilities Department and making sure that things are running correctly. So two perfect candidates to be here today, so I thank you both, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mayor, did you now want to go in order, or do you want to take the ones involving the public first?
Let's do the ones involving the public first.
Okay, then the next presentation will be a presentation by Nikki Rathman concerning Peer Pride activities.
Good evening, Mayor Ward, council members, friends and neighbors. My name's Mickey Rathman, and I am a very proud volunteer and member of the board for Peer Pride. We are a nonprofit organization in San Clemente. All volunteer, and our sole focus is to raise funds for improvement projects and the preservation of one of San Clemente's favorite landmarks, our beautiful San Clemente Pier. So I have a few exciting things to share with you tonight, and I realize I don't have a remote, so let's move it forward. I don't know who I'm supposed to look at for that, but I'm ready for my PowerPoint to go. The first thing that I want to share with you that we're incredibly proud about is over the last six years, the things that we've been able to do along with our incredible partnership with the city of San Clemente and local residents. We've been able to professionally paint the pier. We have beautiful educational signs along all edges of our pier, facing north, south, east, west, all the directions. We have fishing line recycling canisters so that those folks who are fishing and do have monofilament to dispose of have a place to put that instead of putting it in the water. Our pier restroom makeover, which we were able to unveil in 2020, despite the fact that we had a pandemic, is something that we're extra proud. And so we echo city manager's son's comments about the Public Works team and all the hard work that they did on that project. We are so incredibly grateful. It's a great respite as you head to the end of the pier if nature calls, and it also has some beautiful public art. If you haven't seen it, I highly recommend you make a trip out. It's a great photo-worthy spot, good for Instagram and all those social media spots. A little shout out for San Clemente. We do have a light project that's going to be happening later this year. We did really hope that during Peer Pride Month of 2020 that those lights would be installed. But like many things during the last year, it was really hard to get some certain supplies, so we're excited to see those lights go up this year and have our community be able to enjoy some special holiday lights along our beautiful pier. And then our big project for this year is the Snack Shack. So let's move to our next slide. We have a very lofty goal that we're trying to reach in order to renovate the Snack Shack so that it looks good next to the beautiful bathrooms. We have a fundraiser that launches tomorrow, May 19th. It's called Raise Your Paddle for the Pier. It's a virtual auction that's open and available to all residents and lovers of San Clemente. We have some really neat items that you can bid on. Feel free to advance my slide. I'm really, really impressed with some of the things that are available. They include some pier art made by one of our own lifeguards, Mr. Juney, from reclaimed wood from our pier, all the way to incredible barbecues, trips to Hawaii, airplane rides, boat charters, shopping and dining experiences within town, as well as a super neat tour with our favorite journalist Fred Swegles in a historic Woody, where you get to learn some secrets and behind-the-scoop scenes of San Clemente. So those are just a couple of the, I think there's probably more than 100 items that are available for bidding. Some, well, we hope all go for a very high price, but I think there's something for everyone in there, so please feel free to register. You can even register tonight if you want to so that you're ready when it launches tomorrow. If you go to peerpride.org, you'll be able to click to register, to join our incredibly fun Raise Your Paddle for the Pier. Next slide, please. You can keep going. All right, so why did we choose the Pier Shack for our project for this year? After we did the bathroom project, it made it a little more obvious that the Snack Shack needed some love. So that was sort of one thing that we sort of felt it might be overdue for a facelift so that it was equally as beautiful, if not more so, than the restrooms. We also felt like giving it a spruce up would be very good for the concessionaire there, that if they had a freshened building and a unique experience and a place for them to operate their business, that people would be even more excited than they already are to shop and dine there. The end of our pier is very iconic, that people love to walk, to look out, to look for dolphins, whales on clear days, to see Catalina. And we really feel like the experience at the end of our pier can be elevated. So with this lofty goal that we've set, we really hope to improve the experience that people have on our pier. Next slide, please. Our approach to these improvements were multifold. We had community input on things that people wanted to see happen there. We had input from the current concessionaire at the Snack Shack, as well as a local group, RSM Design, helped us with sort of some big visioning ideas and things that maybe we wouldn't think of in our own community that other communities are doing, that we could really make that area unique. Next slide, please. So some of the pictures that you'll see coming up are inspirational in nature, that things may not look exactly like these photos, but it's to give you an idea. So we're hoping to have some public art on the Catalina facing of the building so that as people are out surfing or in their boats looking towards our pier, have something really cool to see, that it isn't all about looking off the pier, that some of it's about looking to the pier. We hope to hide the utility boxes with a unique public art sculpture. It will be a similar process as the council and city saw with the art that we put on the bathroom building, where we will be taking submissions from local artists and the public to be able to have the opportunity to have their art displayed there. Security cameras were a request. Lighting, being able to light the flagpole that's the end of the pier is a really important thing. You may notice that we don't have an American flag flying there, and the reason is because we haven't been able to light it. Pigeon deterrent, I think everyone notices when you go out, the bathroom has no pigeons and the Snack Shack has a lot of pigeons, so soon both will have no pigeons and they will be hanging out elsewhere. And finally, a beautiful weather bang. Next slide, please. So our pledge and our lofty goal for this year for Peer Pride is to raise and give the city $75,000 to make these improvements for our pier. We're raising this money in a number of ways. Our auction that starts tomorrow, Raise Your Paddle for the Pier. We've also, through some nonprofit grants that were offered throughout the pandemic, we were recognized for our good work, and so you'll see, receive $25,000 in grants that will go directly towards this project, as well as having sponsors for some of the improvements that we're making. So there are sponsorship opportunities still available, so any of you out there who are thinking, oh, yes, I really want to get involved and I want to sponsor something, you still have the chance. There's rail seating with special bar stools, upgraded game tables, our flagpole lighting, and our public art. Next slide, please. It's everyone that contributes. We're so incredibly thankful. On behalf of our volunteer board, we're incredibly grateful for our sponsors and for the community, our hope for 2021. These are our sponsors who helped us in 2020 to complete our restroom project. Next slide. So you'll see, on here, you can register for the Raise Your Paddle for the Pier virtual auction via your smartphone. You can text the word PEERPRIDE to 76728. You can also register from your laptop at peerpride.givesmart. And then you can also just go to our website, or our Facebook, or our Instagram, and click on our virtual auction so that you have the opportunity to contribute your great pride in our beautiful landmark. Are there any questions from the council that I might be able to answer?
Go ahead, Mayor Pretend.
Is that Don Brown sitting back there?
It is Don Brown, and he is on our board as well, one of our incredible volunteers.
So Dom shamed me last year into jumping off the pier with him.
Right.
Now I'm going to shame him this year to do it with me, and I think, I think my fellow council members.
I'm in.
You're in, Chris?
As long as you're jumping at the same time.
I'm.
I want a lifeguard to be there.
They are there.
All right, we'll get Nick there.
I encourage everyone to jump off the pier at least once in their life. And the scariest part's not jumping off the pier. The scariest part is getting on the boogie board with Marine Safety and having them pull you, pull you with their jet ski. That scared the hell out of me.
So this is, everyone, your one legal opportunity to jump off the pier. So as part of our virtual auction, there are pier jumps that you can bid on. There's also a buy it now button for those of you who are really excited about it. So tomorrow, you'll be able to do that. You can all be there together. You can't jump simultaneously. They do jump one at a time, but if members of the council did want to jump concurrently, we fully support that. And if some of you just want to be there to be cheerleaders for other council members who are jumping off, we welcome you as well.
I think the city manager should be involved in it.
Yay, yay, yay.
It'll be great fun, but that's available for our community too, if you've ever wanted to jump off the pier. That's available as one of our items.
And you have an unlimited number of jumps off the pier. It's not like you just have a few, right?
We have been lucky enough to secure multiple, so don't worry. If you want to do it, we're going to find a way to make that happen for you.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, our pleasure. Thank you very much for your partnership and support. Thank you.
Thanks, Mickey.
Next is a report from Marissa Espino, Community Relations Specialist, and Warren Whiteacre, Principal Transportation Analyst with OCTA, concerning. Whitaker, Principal Transportation Analyst with OCTA, concerning South Orange County Multimodal Transportation Study.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thanks. Good evening. I am Warren Whitaker, OCTA Principal Transportation Analyst and Study Project Manager for the South Orange County Multimodal Transportation Study, or SOCMITs. And as the mayor indicated, I will be providing an overview of the study, along with Marissa Espino, OCTA Principal Community Relations Specialist and Outreach Project Manager for the study. As reflected in this slide, the study considers all travel modes, including emerging technology, to develop a long-term vision for South Orange County. Next slide, please. Last year, an agreement was reached by OCTA, the Transportation Corridor Agencies, and Caltrans, to conclude the process of studying toll road extension options in South Orange County, and instead advanced three near-term projects. The non-toll extension of Los Petronas Parkway to La Pata, shown in blue, widening of Ortega Highway, shown in green, and the southern extension of carpool lanes on I-5 from Avenida Pico to the San Diego County border, shown in purple. Beyond these near-term projects, longer-term solutions were deferred to SOCMITs, this study. Next slide, please. Studies like SOCMITs provide a long-term vision for the transportation system. This study will develop a vision that looks out to the year 2045 and beyond by engaging with stakeholders, analyzing transportation issues and opportunities, and ultimately identifying the locally preferred strategy. Once a locally preferred strategy is approved by the OCTA Board, study recommendations can be considered in OCTA's Long Range Transportation Plan and SCAG's Regional Transportation Plan. Projects can then be added to the Federal Transportation Improvement Program to fund project-level studies and ultimately implementation. Slide four, please. As illustrated, the study area is generally south of State Route 55 to the San Diego County line. This is the same area that was studied back in 2008 as part of the South Orange County Major Investment Study. Most of the recommendations from the 2008 study have already been implemented or are underway, including the completed carpool lanes on I-5 between San Juan Capistrano and San Clemente, and the current construction project that is adding lanes to I-5 between State Route 73 and El Toro Road. Other notable changes since 2008 include down scaled growth projections for population employment, a decline in transit ridership, the introduction of transportation network companies, OC Flex, and Measure M community-based transit circulators, as well as widespread use of navigation and traffic apps. More recently, public health directives in response to the COVID-19 pandemic have impacted travel, economic activity, and transit service. But the long-term impacts may not be known for some time. We also need to consider requirements to analyze greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled, as well as emerging technologies like autonomous vehicles. Slide five, please. This study is being completed in three phases. The first phase was completed last calendar year, which resulted in documenting transportation issues and opportunities, developing a purpose and need statement, and identifying a set of strategies addressed in the purpose and need. Phase two is currently underway. During this phase, we'll evaluate the phase one strategies and recommend a reduced set of multimodal alternatives. Finally, phase three will evaluate the reduced set of alternatives and recommend a locally preferred strategy. We plan to start the third phase this summer, and it is our goal to complete the entire study by late 2021. Slide six, please. And I'd like to have Marissa jump in here to address our public outreach efforts.
All right, thank you, Warren. Good evening. I am Marissa Espino, an OCTA Principal Community Relations Specialist. I wanted to briefly walk you through the public engagement efforts that we have completed and what we plan for the next few months. Last fall, we promoted an online survey, asking the public to help identify challenges and transportation deficiencies, along with some potential solutions. The OCTA team engaged with residents, stakeholders, local jurisdictions, local elected officials, and partner agencies during the first phase of study. We received 360 survey responses at the time, and the survey results showed respondents would like to see four key improvements. Those are reduced traffic congestion, increased frequency and accessibility of multimodal transportation, increased safety and efficiency for all modes of travel, and increased alternative transportation frequency and accessibility. In late May and June of this year, we plan to kick off our second round of outreach to get feedback on the draft transportation strategies. As we did in the first phase, we will promote an online survey that will be available in multiple languages, including English, Spanish, Vietnamese, Korean, and Mandarin. For the online survey promotion, we'll be utilizing social media, blogs, and e-blasts, and we'll also distribute a communications toolkit to all partner cities, including San Clemente, and various organizations. This toolkit will have pre-written language to use for social media posts, blogs, and websites. We also have a telephone helpline, which allows people to call in if they're unable or prefer not to comment online. The helpline enables people to leave comments, ask questions, and take the survey by phone from a live operator instead. In addition, OCTA identified disadvantaged and low-income communities in South County, in the South County area, and we plan to mail out postcards to these communities as they do, so they directly receive information from about the survey, the helpline number, and the upcoming meetings. The online survey, fact sheet, and helpline are available in the five different languages mentioned before. We also plan to hold a stakeholder roundtable, an elected's roundtable, and a telephone town hall in June. The elected's roundtable is taking place on June 15th, and the telephone town hall will be on June 17th. And we will be, again, promoting those dates and times and all the information. That concludes my slide. I will hand it back over to Warren.
Thank you, Marissa. You can actually go back to the last slide before we jump off there, because I want to add on a little bit. In addition to the public outreach and emphasizing the consensus building aspect of the study, we are engaging several groups of stakeholders to understand the transportation needs for South County. This includes two technical working groups comprised of the cities of South County and the county itself, as well as partner agencies like Caltrans, the Transportation Corridor Agencies, the Southern California Association of Governments, and agencies in San Diego County. In addition, we have engaged with agencies for one-on-one meetings to better understand and address their specific priorities in SOCMITs. Now we can go to slide seven. To establish transportation issues and opportunities in the study area, we evaluated existing, that is, prior to the pandemic, in 2045 conditions if no improvements were made. Looking first at the automobile travel mode, we have identified several key issues. Recurring congestion on highways, but with distinct variations between weekdays, weekends, and throughout the year. And the lack of east-west highways means arterias experience congestion as well. Looking at transit, the relatively low-density land use patterns in South County make accessibility by transit challenging. As a result, transit service operates with less frequency as demand is low. Shifting to active transportation, despite a robust biking and walking network, critical gaps in the network remain. Additionally, the roadway network, topography, and long distances between land uses limits the viability of active transportation for many routine trips. Safety is also a concern, especially when cyclists or pedestrians need to negotiate fast-moving traffic. Travel Demand Management, or TDM, looks at ways to reduce vehicle trips, especially during peak periods. We are all now very familiar with remote work and virtual meetings. These types of strategies are especially important for South County, given the long distances, commonly traveled, and the limited transit options. Slide eight, please. The Purpose and Need Statement builds on the transportation issues and opportunities and feedback received during the first phase. Namely, the identified needs in the blue boxes include addressing land use patterns in a transportation network that favor driving, growing travel demand on a constrained transportation system, environmental and economic sustainability challenges, and planning for evolving travel behaviors. For each study need, several purposes which respond to those needs have been identified. The Purpose and Need Statement is used to develop and evaluate strategies and alternatives considered in the study. I also want to highlight that a key underlying study goal is to enhance equity and quality of life. Slide nine, please. This slide provides examples of strategies that are being evaluated on their ability to address the purpose and need. These strategies span from addressing bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements, to establishing mobility hubs that improve first-last-mile connections between transit services and major activity centers. Likewise, strategies to get more use out of existing roadway capacity through existing and emerging technologies are being considered. Finally, we've seen dramatic changes in traffic since March 2020 due to the pandemic. Strategies that support continued remote work, but also position us for, position us for emerging technology might also be considered. This could entail communication infrastructure that also supports connected and autonomous vehicles. Slide 10, please. This slide illustrates how we are evaluating strategies. We have bundled the strategies into eight groups, as shown in green. Again, the intent is to see how well each strategy bundle addresses the purpose and need on its own. These findings will be used to create a menu of effective strategies for consideration in developing the four multimodal alternatives, shown in orange. The focus of the upcoming round of public engagement effort, Marissa described earlier, will be on moving from the strategy bundles to the multimodal alternatives. This reduced set of alternatives will then be brought back to the OCTA Board for consideration prior to analyzing them as part of the third phase of the study. Next slide, please. Over the next several weeks, we will engage with partner agencies and the public on the results of the strategy bundle screening, and ways to combine strategies into multimodal alternatives that address the purpose and need. We will reconvene the stakeholder and elected official roundtables to seek input as we work towards reaching consensus on a set of multimodal transportation improvements for South Orange County. Results of this screening and the proposed set of multimodal alternatives, along with public and partner input, will then be presented to the OCTA Board this summer as we pivot to phase three. Again, the goal is to complete the study by the end of this calendar year with a consensus-based, locally-preferred multimodal strategy. I also want to emphasize that the study is looking out to the year 2045 and beyond. With that in mind, the study will focus on long-term needs rather than near-term responses to and recovery from the pandemic. That concludes our presentation.
I have a question quickly. When you engage the elected officials again, would you please contact our staff in order to set up those appointments?
Absolutely.
Yeah, just don't send us elected officials an email, because we get like 50 to 100 emails a day, and it would very be, be helpful to go through our staff. You know, I still would appreciate the email, but that can't be the only notice for the, for the stakeholder group.
Absolutely, we'll make sure to do that. Okay, thank you very much.
One quick comment, if I would.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just want to thank you folks from OCTA for coming here today. It's good to hear from our actual regional planning agency, and we really appreciate your commitment to take local municipalities' interests into account as part of your process. That's not something we see from, from other agencies like the TCA. Quick question, on the, for clarification, on the I-5 extension that you discussed.
Grammarly can help you write quickly and.
Okay. On the I-5 extension, are you talking about extending towards the middle of I-5? Is that where these HOV lanes would go, not extending outward into the community?
Yeah, it's, 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 it's in the center base. And so that environmental process is, is just starting up now, and we will definitely be coming back to you as, as it progresses through that process, and how that would work, and the specifics on there, and, and what all specifics are required to be evaluated with Caltrans for, for that environmental document. But the intention is, is no additional right-of-way, everything's within the existing right-of-way.
Okay, yeah, I know we had some concerns in the community about that, so it's good to hear. Thank you.
No other questions?
I'll just echo Councilmember Duncan's comment. It's great to speak to the real regional traffic planning agency. Thank you for coming here this evening.
Thank you, very informative presentation.
The next item is a presentation by Captain Manhart, Chief of San Clemente Police Services, concerning bike safety awareness.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for giving me this time to talk to you guys tonight. I want to talk about an issue that needs our, our attention in the city. Currently, we have received numerous complaints about bicycle safety issues. And I know that the city has received those complaints, as well as the Sheriff's Department. And so what I did is, since January, I just pulled the traffic accidents from January till today. We currently have 11 bicycle traffic accidents that involve other vehicles on the roadway. So that's not including the beach trail. This is, this is on the roadway. Out of those 11 traffic accidents, eight of them were minor children riding on bikes. And the riders sustained various injuries from anywhere from a complaint of pain to multiple fractures. Fortunately, thank goodness, no fatalities at this time, but this is what we're trying to do is, is to mitigate that. On that, various reasons for the collision, there have been, it's been all over the board. It's been the drivers of the vehicles, it's been the riders of the bicycles, sometimes it's a combination of both. So we're trying to educate the drivers of the vehicles, and the bicyclists, the adults, and also the minors on that. So some challenges that we have come up with, that we, we identified. So with minor bicyclists that are on the roadway, all of us, everybody in this room, we got our driver's license, we all went, we all took classes, we learned the rules of the road, we were tested on that, and so therefore we know. Matter of fact, there's some adults in the city that don't adhere to that, because my motors issue citations on that. The challenge that we have is that we have 12-year-old, 14-year-olds that are riding on the roadway, they don't know the rules of the road. They need to be educated on that. They don't wear their safety equipment. And these are issues that we need to work collectively to try to solve this. One thing that, that is a, is an absolute constant, bicyclist and motorcyclist on the roadway, whether they are at fault or not, they will always lose. So even if they have the right-of-way, and they know that I'm allowed to be here, if they're not being defensive, that they will lose. Trying to teach a 14-year-old to be a defensive rider is a challenge, but it, but it's something that they need to be aware of, because a 3,000-pound car can do a lot of damage on that. So I just want to talk briefly about some of the efforts that we've done with OCSD and along with the city, what we're doing this month to try to get that education out there. Most important, education is important. It starts with that. What I have done in the past couple of months, my motor officers have been directed by me to stop all violators of minors not wearing their safety gear, or, or driving on the roadway, not adhering to the road, the rules of the road. And what they've been doing is they've been calling the parents at the stop and letting them know that their, their son or daughter were in violation. We did not issue citations at that time, but we're just trying to get the message across. I will assure you, if this trend continues, my motor officers will not be issuing warnings, they're going to issue citations. And so yes, if a 12-year-old receives a citation on a roadway, that 12-year-old, along with the parent or guardian, will attend traffic work. But it is, this, what we have going on here is completely unacceptable. One accident's too many, 11 is unacceptable. We put together a bicycle safety video, maybe we'll show that at the end. Basically, it was targeted towards the minor riders, maybe if they don't know the rules of the road, or the signaling, or the safety equipment, and we're just trying to get that out there. I want to give a shout out to our school resource officer, Deputy Rogers, has done a fantastic job at the elementary schools, in the junior high. She's, she has inspected vehicles, the bicycles. If you're not aware, that, so the electric bicycles come in three different classes, one, two, and three. Class three bicycles are only allowed to be ridden by people that are 16 years and older. And I assure you right now, there are no 16-year-olds in junior high in, in San Clemente, but there were numerous class three bicycles in some of the junior highs. So Deputy Rogers in the school notified the parents that they had these bikes, and there were some excuses of whether it was the siblings' bicycle that the child took on accident, or the parents didn't know. I completely understand, but we, we've got to get that message out there, that they can't be riding those. And so she's done a really good job about that. Also, I want to give a shout out to the city. The city has organized on Wednesday, the 26th, at the Vista Hermosa Sports Park, we're gonna have a bicycle safety rodeo. So we're gonna be there, the city's gonna be there. We have kind of a course to, to educate the minors. So we're going to be there. The city's going to be there. We have kind of a course to educate the minors about how to ride the bikes, but we want also, at the same time when you register for that at the city's website, we also want the parent or guardian to participate because the whole idea is to get everybody together to educate as best as possible. And finally, the last thing I'm asking for, I'm asking for the community's help because what's going on right now is not acceptable. But I can tell you, last week I was driving westbound on Pico and I saw a young student riding on a bicycle and the helmet was attached to the rear of the bike. Not a good place for it. It's not going to do anybody any good. Fortunately, my motor pulled that student over, called the parents. And but it's multiple times. Also, students believe the bicycles don't have to adhere to the rules of the roadway. So they cross and they think that they're not responsible for that completely. That's not the case. So we're just trying to get those messages out there. So I appreciate the time and I don't know if we can play the video. If not, it's on the city. And it's on our social media, so. Anybody have any questions?
Captain Manhart, what was the date of that rodeo, the bicycle rodeo at Hermosa?
It's on Wednesday, May 26th.
Thank you.
At 3:00 to 5:00.
Thank you.
Captain Manhart, how many do you have at your fingertips, the number of citations you've written to minors on bicycles this year, this calendar year?
No, up until this point, we've been educating. We've been calling the parents. So we haven't started that. My whole goal is, for minors, is educating, but the problem is, the trend is out of control right now. And so it's going to come to a point that we're trying to get the message out there and we're going to transition into enforcement.
I got to tell you, it's terrible. I'm glad you're addressing this. It's not only terrible with the kids, but the adult riders are a hazard as well. And, you know, I am, my biggest, I got to tell you, my biggest fear driving down the road is I'm going to hit a bicycle. Because they're, you know, they're a vehicle when it's convenient, then suddenly they become a pedestrian and cross the road in front of you. And I understand under California Vehicle Code, they can take up a lane. You know, but I wouldn't do that, you know.
But if you do, I want you to hear the rules of the road.
Exactly. And the last thing I would comment on is, yes, we need to address this, but kids underage in golf carts is a huge hazard as well. You know, baby steps. Let's address this. But, and I appreciate the fact you guys are going to do it. Is it going to be mostly your motors are going to do it or all your deputies?
All of them. All of them will be doing it. But I've tasked the motor specifically in certain areas that we've had numerous complaints to really reduce the risk right now. But yes, absolutely, everybody's going to be.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam.
Well, I imagine that our bike riders are very surprised to be pulled over by a motor. And that should get their attention, hopefully. What I would ask staff, if, for this bicycle rodeo that's on May 26th, we'd like to get as many kids involved as possible, would it be beneficial to send a notice out to all of the bike shops that are selling the e-bikes?
We can absolutely do that, Mayor.
Possibly. I'm just trying to think of any way that we can get that out so that we have good participation.
School Resource Officer Deputy Lindsay Rogers at all of the schools have posted where the bike racks are, the flyer that you have for the city website. So that's, we're hoping to get a lot of the students at the schools, both the junior highs and elementary schools.
Okay, I appreciate that. I did notice at the high school, there is a lot of e-bike riders going back and forth on Pico. And I was wondering what the school is going to do about that. I was going to call the Principal Carter and ask him if they've installed bike racks for these multiple e-bikes because, you know, they take up a lot of room. They don't all fit the same as, you know, the other bicycles. The one thing I'm concerned about, City Manager and maybe City Attorney, is our actual municipal code does not allow for class 3 bikes. We only spell out, isn't it class 1 and 2? Or is it class 1 that we don't allow? It's class 3 I thought that we do not allow because they go over 20 or 25 miles an hour. So what are we going to do in that instance? It's not called out in the code. That means it's not allowed.
I was going to ask you. I believe it's type 3 that are called out as not being allowed.
That's what I think also. So those are not allowed in the municipal code. So that might be something that needs to be enforced. When, you know, I don't know how you feel about it. I guess there's a code that over 16 and older in California, they can ride those?
Yes.
But I believe municipalities are able to dictate whether those are allowed or not.
Does it say it's prohibited or is it just not mentioned?
It's actually called out as not being allowed. So that means it's prohibited. I believe. That's my memory of the zoning.
I recall that, Mayor. However, we will be coming back to the City Council based on the direction of creating that, I'm going to say, the web portal for submitting complaints or near misses as it relates to e-bikes. So when we come back to the council with that, we'll also have other code options for amending for the council to look at depending on the action that the council takes at that time.
Okay, please, please look into that because it was specifically called out as not allowed and that might be why we're having so many additional problems because we have a more powerful bike, you know, on our roadways.
Bicycle problems all the way around. It's just not the class 3.
No, I agree. I just don't want, if we're having, within our city, that's being sold at any of our businesses that we have control over, that has to stop or we need to talk about amending our code. So, okay, I just wanted to bring that up. So are we going to show the video or not? Was that part of the program? No.
The council, if you, we ought to queue it up if you'd like to see it.
How long is it?
Captain Manhart, Ms. Massey has a question. So when you finish, if you could address her question.
Okay, how long is the video?
How long is it? I think it's two minutes.
I have a quick comment as well.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'll let Jiffy go first.
All right, Captain, thank you very much for that presentation and we appreciate the effort that the Orange County Sheriff's is making to provide safety for vehicle drivers and the bike riders. Appreciate that.
Just a couple of comments. One, I toured San Clemente High School with Chris Carter last week. And actually, he made a point that they are putting more bike racks in there that they've seen as kids have come back to school, more and more e-bikes, and they're accommodating those. Their biggest thing is nobody's locking the e-bikes up. So people could just take off with them. Like the kids, along with putting the helmet on the back, aren't locking the bikes up. Captain Manhart, as a father of three young children, I appreciate your efforts here with the bike riding. I'll be at the bike rodeo with my son, so looking forward to that. Mayor Ward, if you'll indulge me on something a little off-topic, but I see Captain Manhart here. It reminds me, as we memorialize Bill Hart, how passionate he was about public safety. And one of the things he always mentioned to me was how much he supported the Citizens Academy. I think we're going to be bringing it back and, well, I might suggest that we name the Citizens Academy after Bill Hart, if that's something we can do. So we can put that off for another meeting, but I just wanted to bring that up as we have Captain Manhart here.
We can talk about that. I attended that academy with Bill, who I could say was a very good shot when we went to the training center. So anyway, that would be something I think to bring up
Sure.
under council comments and for next year's budget, probably in the budget hearing. Thank you, Captain Manhart. Okay, so Madam Clerk, I believe we're, okay. Let's go back to A.
Yes.
Okay.
This is the toll road update.
Okay, and I believe that because we're under the toll road update, there was a want of the council to move an item that we have further in the agenda, 8B, up to this moment in time. So if anyone is wishing to, I'll need a vote of that to move it first.
I saw moved.
So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Duncan to move 8B to the toll road update.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock?
Aye.
Mayor Potem James?
Aye.
And Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Carries five of them.
Okay, so for the public, we're going to take up item 8B now under the toll road update. If anyone wants to speak on 8B and you haven't put in a card, please do so now. And City Manager, I believe you're under for this item.
The toll road update.
Yes. Well, it's a toll road update, but we're moving 8B to it. So it's a withdrawal from the Transportation Corridor Agency's Joint Exercise of Power Agreement.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. So based on the Transportation Corridor Agency's board meeting of last week, if you remember, the City of San Clemente voted to initiate the withdrawal process. But as part of that request, the City Council asked for the TCA to waive the 120-day period to withdraw from the TCA as well as we asked for all of our DIF obligations or developer impact fee obligations in the event of withdrawal. At that TCA board meeting of last week, the board voted to waive the 120 days for the withdrawal from the TCA, but there was the condition that you, the City Council, would make a decision at today's meeting as to whether you wanted to initiate that withdrawal from the toll road agency. And so before you, today, you have that information in the staff report, but you have the option or two action options. Is one is to withdraw from the TCA and begin that process, or you have the option to not withdraw from the TCA agency. And so I'll end my staff presentation, but answer any questions the council may have.
Is there any questions of staff on this item?
I have a question, Mayor Ward. Thank you. City Manager Sun, has there been any interest in other cities joining San Clemente in a potential withdrawal from the TCA?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. And for the City Attorney, City Attorney, there seems to be a little disagreement, I'll call it, but a little different view on these DIFs and how they'll be impacted upon the departure from the TCA, should the council do that. Could you comment on that, please?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, part of the city's request was that upon its departure, TCA provide an accounting of what remaining collection of DIFs is necessary in TCA's eyes to close out existing obligations that the city has. TCA has not provided that accounting and so we need to talk about pursuing that because I think we're entitled to that. The one thing I can tell you for certain is that the agenda report from the TCA meeting agreed with our position that going forward, TCA could not issue new debt that relies on San Clemente DIFs to pay it. So what that existing obligation is, what proportion of the debt TCA thinks is attributable to the city and how much of that remains outstanding, unfortunately, we haven't been able to learn yet. But our intent is to get together with them, have them put a finer point on that and provide that to the city.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Ferguson, are you finished?
Yes, with my questions, yeah. Thank you.
Any other council member?
I have no questions. I just have a couple of comments. The city joined the TCA 25 years ago and the intention of the TCA was to build the 241 and the 73. Well, the 241 was supposed to go around San Clemente and for a lot of reasons, it did not. And the TCA entered into a settlement with some litigants agreeing not to use to go around San Clemente. City of San Clemente was never part of that settlement. That was done without our input.
Well, we voted no.
Yeah.
Once we were notified of it the day of.
And like all government agencies, it's taken on a life of its own. It's trying to find a purpose. They've built the two roads. They continue to go further into debt, refinancing and extending their debt out. And it's time for us to get out of it and to be done with them. And I would also note, I've used the number 22 to 2. The mayor pointed out to me today that we're usually outvoted 26 or 27 to 2. You can talk all day long about people who are saying, we should stay with the TCA and have a voice. Well, you can have a voice, but if no one's listening, it doesn't matter how loud you shout. They don't care. We've tried to play nice with them. We've tried to collaborate with them. And there is a contingent within the TCA that's hell-bent on putting a toll road through the middle of our town. And they deny it, but when you really, you know, put their backs to the corner, they will acknowledge that they will not eliminate the possibility of putting a toll road through our city. We're not protecting our city for what's going to happen 10 months from now. But I will tell you, we're protecting our city for what very well could occur 10, 10 years from now. And the entire prospect of a toll road coming through our city is completely unacceptable. And, you know, we can sort out what the DIFs are going to be, but we've been asking about, okay, if we owe you, if we're accountable for something to you, give us a number. It's been a month. They have not been able to give us a number. Why can't they give us a number? One of the chairs stated the other day in our meeting with the TCA, in which they voted to allow us to leave, that she was concerned that it would impact their credit rating if we left.
Wall Street.
Wall Street, exactly. We don't know enough about what's going on with the finances. So by leaving on the 30th of June, at least we won't be accountable, the city will not be accountable for any further debt that the TCA goes into. And I'll go back to my original point. It's a typical government agency. It's finding reasons to stay alive. It's looking for a mission and we should not be part of that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So Council, if you'll indulge me, I have a statement that I'd like to make. I represent the City of San Clemente on the Foothill Eastern, the 241 Toll Road Board. And the Mayor Potem represents the City of San Clemente on the 73, the San Joaquin Hills Toll Road Board. I'm not going to provide a history lesson today, tonight, on the Transportation Corridor Agencies and I'm going to keep my comments on the issue brief. We join this agency for specific reasons and promises made, promises that we in turn made to our residents and all taxpayers of Orange County. San Clemente joined an agency with 11 other cities and the county to build two toll road corridors with locations of the roadway set by state legislation. The pledge we made with the other cities is that we would oversee this agency and we would pay off the debt and make these roads free upon turning them over to the state and Caltrans. In my six years on the agency, I see no adherence to our agreement and no intention of paying these roads off. As long as the board continues to not pay off the debt, the taxpayers of Orange County will continue to pay tolls to use these roads that were intended to be part of the free state highway system. The agency wants to continue indefinitely and never end its mission. San Clemente did not join this agency to agree to perpetually charge tolls for a system that was meant to be free and to perpetually incur more debt for our town. for our taxpayers for any future project TCA can envision themselves to do. On the Foothill Eastern, the 241 Toll Road, there is a board of 15. There are 12 cities and three board supervisors. On San Joaquin Hills, the 73 Board, there's a board of 14, 12 cities again, and two board supervisors. San Clemente has one vote on each one of these boards. We alone cannot stop the agency from continuing to usurp their mission, delaying paying off the bonds or holding up an agency that was an experiment in the first place as the first-ever public toll road. We can't do it at all costs under billion dollars in debt. We can, however, tonight, use our one vote that San Clemente has, that we do have, to get out of this agency. And with that, if there's no other comments, I would call for a vote.
Mayor Ward, I have a, oh, sorry. I thought we were just asking questions. I'll wait for Councilmember Noblock, thank you.
Councilmember Noblock, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm concerned as well about the toll road. And what concerns me most is that after the March 2020 vote where the toll road board said, "We're not planning on coming through San Clemente, we're abandoning that effort and will stop the toll road at Oso," they continued to not support Senator Bates' bill to legislatively concur with that decision. And further, and I tended to believe them and take them in good faith, but as I've, at various community meetings around the county, bumped into various TCA board members, I keep hearing this nagging comment about, "Why don't we continue to, why are we fighting the toll road through town? It makes sense, we have connectivity, et cetera." And I'm thinking, they've already voted a year ago to not continue. So I was concerned about pulling out, that we lose our voice, even though it's one vote out of several dozen, that we're not at the table to hear what's going on, to make a verbal protest. That concerned me, but I think pulling out of the toll road probably makes a larger statement, that we want nothing to do with their efforts and we're going to continue to resist them steadfastly. So based on that, I regrettably support the motion to withdraw.
Here's your, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ferguson, your comment.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Ward. I'll read my comments too, that I've put together because I'm the dissenting vote on this one and have stayed firm on that. But I'm against the toll road through San Clemente, always have been. If San Clemente withdraws its membership, we're giving up our power, even to object, even if we lose every time. We need to remain to protect our open space and the voice of our residents. I truly believe we need to still represent the voice of the people here, as well as we have political powers as well by staying on the TCA board. And I believe we lose some political clout if we leave. We can do more good from inside to monitor the activities of TCA, in part, the decision-making, to protect, again, our residents. And I just wanted to point out to people watching today that the residents and the movement in which city leadership has also been involved in over the years, including you, Mayor Ward, from the beginning, is to make the progress we've made today. We wouldn't have made that had we not been part of this board and had a say and had some political clout, which we did, and really stopped that toll road from coming through San Clemente and shifting the TCA's study of alternatives to this free arterial that they'd landed on at this time. And then, plus the financial commitment, and we're still waiting, still unknown at this time, makes me a little nervous to not know where that's going to be. And so for that reason, I feel we need a seat at the table. But all in all, I know I'm not going to convince you of this, and that's fine. We're, you know, we're allowed to have our different opinions because at the previous meeting in April, I already voted no on this position to depart from the TCA. But at least we're unified that we don't want a toll road coming through San Clemente, that we just have different methods on how we're going to get there. So I'll continue to work with all of you to ensure a toll road does not ever come through San Clemente, and I'll work together, even though we might not vote together on this one. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Ferguson.
Mayor Ward, just a few points as well.
Yes.
I'll talk about some numbers as well, Mayor Protem James. The estimated cost for the toll roads originally was $858 million. By 1998, when both roads were completed to their current state, total construction cost had risen to $2.9 billion. 1998, original debt of $2.9 billion was to be paid off in 2033 for the State Route 73 and 2040 for State Route 241. The total cost, including debt service, was $5.8 billion now. Now, this is important. Despite principal and interest payments for 22 years, the TCA's total outstanding debt ballooned to $5 billion from that $2.9 billion. So the principal went up. How many homeowners out there, your principal goes up over time? TCA now projects further principal and interest payments of $10.6 billion through 2053 now, will be required to pay off the debt. That's if they don't accumulate any more debt. Again, during this 22-year period where the debt doubled, no new roads were built. This cost has been borne by our residents, us. We'll be forced to pay tolls on those roads indefinitely unless the TCA is forced to start paying off the debt. Now, this doesn't even include the $770 million they got from development impact fees that were supposed to be used to pay down that debt. Came from us too. We all paid for that, increased charges for our homes and increased leases for our business owners on commercial properties. I'll leave you at this. This is a quote from the grand jury of Orange County about the TCA. Quote, "With the exception of the repayment of its accumulated debts, there appears to be little, if anything, in the matter of highway planning, construction, or any county transportation activities the TCA can do that is not already being accomplished by other agencies." The grand jury wrote. I couldn't have said that better myself. So I wholeheartedly support this. I think it's due time, and San Clemente doesn't support this agency, and we've finally been able to take a step forward in showing everyone how much we don't support it and that you can do something about it. So I'm proud of us.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, are there comments from the public on this?
I was going to ask the clerk, I saw no comments. Okay. So if the council will indulge me, I would like to make the motion. Thank you.
Please.
Approve the request to withdraw from the Transportation Corridor Agency's Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Ward, second by Mayor Protem James.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
No.
Councilmember Noblock?
Aye.
Mayor Protem James?
Aye.
And Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-1.
That felt good.
I thank you all for your comments, including Councilmember Ferguson. This has been a long time coming, and as Councilmember Duncan said, I am proud that we are at this moment and taking this step. So, Madam Clerk, next item.
Okay, the next item is update on homeless issue. And I have one speaker card from Donna Vedreen.
Okay, Ms. Vedreen? Thank you, you're up.
After visiting with local hotels in San Clemente, I am confident that we could shelter the San Clemente homeless with four blocks of rooms at four different locations in San Clemente. This would require significant funding and case management services, but it is doable. We would need case management services from the start. FAM, I Hope, Illumination Foundation, Mercy House, Friendship Shelter. This would get the unhoused into shelter. They would have access to behavioral health services, assistance to obtain benefits like social security, healthcare, and job assistance. The city would benefit by being able to enforce those out on the street refusing assistance as long as a shelter bed was available. Authorize a safe parking program at the Old City Hall Lot. Illumination Foundation or FAM could manage the program. Tour with Illumination Foundation tomorrow, Wednesday, May 19th, at 12:00 noon. RSVP required. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Vedreen. Is there any other public comments?
No.
City Manager, do we have any homeless update at this time?
The only update I do have, as I've indicated, we have Mercy House currently on an interim contract providing mobile outreach services. The city is in the final stages of concluding its recruitment for the community service outreach worker, and I do anticipate that position being filled within the next 30 to 45 days.
Thank you very much. Is there any other questions of staff? No, okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Next item is oral communications, part one. And I have one card from Bill Crutenger.
He's calling.
He's at the door?
Good evening, Mayor Ward, Council. I'm here to ask that during item four, you please consider agendizing for discussion what had been Agenda Item 8A at the last meeting. I think it would be in the city's best interest and in the interest of all parties concerned that the issue, and this is true regardless of the decision council may make, it's in the city's best interest that that item be discussed and that a decision be made. Thank you.
What item was item 8A at the last meeting? I wasn't at that meeting.
It's current item 9E.
Is it on the current agenda?
No.
I don't think so. 8A was the lawsuit.
Oh, the lawsuit, I'm sorry, yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought it was, yeah, okay.
It was a consideration of, we agendized it in public. It was consideration of...
We had the...
Of pursuing a JPA. You know, being able to go to the JPA for the right of insurance.
Oh.
I'm not seeing it correctly. So Scott?
That was it, it was to appeal the analogous coverage in Bieber v. James.
Right, the city council has not been able to vote on that?
By the way, I was on vacation last time, Madam Mayor, and I had my, in Cabo, and I carried all my heavy equipment down there to zoom in, and I had zero receptions, I apologize for missing that.
So any council member would like to bring that up under immediate agendas? That would be the item. Okay, so, Madam Clerk, that's it for oral communications?
Can we have motions, wave, reading, and call of all resolutions, ordinance?
Second.
A motion by Mayor Protem, and a second by Councilmember Noblock.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Protem James?
Aye.
Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Carries five out. Consideration of agendizing items requiring immediate action. Are there any?
All right, I will move that we, as was recommended, we move up that item for immediate action regarding that lawsuit that we had on the prior.
Is there a second?
Help me understand the motion.
Well, we're going to, we'll have to ask the city attorney about this, but the motion is to immediately agendize consideration of a vote of the city council for that right of insurance. And if this motion goes through, I believe Councilmember James would have to leave the room.
Is this for the defense for the Bieber action?
Yes.
Okay.
Involving the JPIA in the city.
Under consideration, I'm a witness in that case, so I'll be recusing myself as well.
Okay.
And I'll be recusing as well, Mayor Ward. As I pointed out at the last meeting, as I stated early on in the meeting when Mayor Protem James had rearranged the agenda, it's on the minutes, I had to recuse myself because I do see this as the gift of public funds, I won't be participating.
I would request that you abstain or vote no, Councilmember Ferguson, so that we can get a quorum.
I'll be recusing myself again.
Councilmember Ferguson, I would make the same request. You did not mention why you're recusing, just that you are recusing. We've asked you.
I'll be recusing, right. I'm just mentioning it now, it wasn't in the minutes, it wasn't captured in the minutes. I did state at the beginning of the last meeting that I do see this as a gift of public funds, and I'm recusing, and I don't even have to have a reason for recusal under the law.
But your nonparticipation is not allowing the council to have a vote.
That's correct, I will not be participating. Is there any other way you would like me to try to communicate that to all of you?
Yes, that you would do your duty to stick around and allow...
No, I won't be. I've recused myself last time, and I'll recuse myself this time. I've chosen that route, and I plan to stick with it, thank you.
City Attorney?
Yeah, Mayor, we won't have a quorum to decide that, to hear that motion if it's made. I think you've also got an issue with adding it as a late-breaking item. You'd have to find that the matter came to the council's attention after the posting of this agenda, which since it was on last time, I don't think you made that finding. What I'd suggest is, if you want to talk about the quorum in the future, considering it at a future meeting, that you do that under Council Comments as a prospective item.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay, thank you for considering that.
I did consider the item from the public, the mention of it, to be able to agendize that at this time, since it was not agendized. Okay, so, Madam Clerk, are we on the consent calendar?
We're actually on closed session report, city attorney.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor and Council. There was no reportable action taken in closed session of it.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion, unless council staff or the public requests removal of an item for separate discussion and action. I have not received any requests for removal.
All right, council members, is there any items to pull?
Madam Mayor, I request we pull item 6E as an echo, and item 6J is a blue light.
Those were the two I was going to pull.
Okay, so Councilmember Duncan is on both of those also. Any other item to pull? Go ahead, Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Ward. I'd like to pull the minutes of May 4th, that would be A2.
6A2?
Yes, please, 6A2, and then 6E on the consent.
All right, so, Councilmember Ferguson can key on that also.
Thank you.
The items to pull, is there a motion to approve the balance?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem and a second by Councilmember Duncan to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock?
Aye.
Mayor Protem James?
Aye.
And Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Carries five out. So, first item is 6A2, that's the city council minutes of May 4th.
Okay, thank you. There is two, there are two sections. One is on page three, under Special Presentations Toll Road Update. And there was a comment by Mayor Protem James about inappropriate communications taken place with TCA and Councilmember Ferguson. And my comments are missing from that. I did indicate that government entities, including JPAs, can communicate with whomever they wish. So I'd like to see that comment added in there to that minute section. And then, secondly, page five, on the top, it talks about participation in Agenda Item 8A, which we just discussed momentarily. I recused early on in the meeting. It says I recuse myself from participation, but it doesn't state why. I did make a statement of fact of recusal before doing that early on in the meeting, and that was as I just had stated because I just perceive this as a gift of public funds. And that's all, thank you.
Councilmember Ferguson, if you remember, I believe Councilmember Duncan and I both asked you later in the meeting that you did not state at that time why you were recusing, and we asked you that. And I know staff goes over these minutes with listening to the tape, and we don't add things after the fact, but you did not state why you were recusing yourself on that.
Thank you, Mayor Ward. I'm not rewriting history. I did state it early on when Mayor Protem James pulled the agenda to rearrange a couple of items, and I did state it early on. on. I was specific on that, so people who were here to speak wouldn't have to wait around. I did not repeat it when you had asked me to, that Item Eight A, we were bringing that item up again for discussion and why I was recusing, but I did state it early on, and the tape does indicate that. I, I know that.
Okay, so
Councilmember Ferguson, I did listen to it, and I did not hear it, or I did not understand it, but I would not know what to add to the minutes.
Okay, I basically said exactly what I said tonight, that I had saw this as a gift of public funds early on.
Councilmember Ferguson, you also stated under Special Presentations, when it was brought up that you had improper communications with Transportation Corridor Agency outside the members who are on that board, you stated that you were, it was okay because you were an alternate. Do you still would like that in the minute?
You could put that in there, because I'm, I'm allowed to write them and tell them how I voted on a matter, and Mayor Potem James did read my email. I did confirm how the vote went on that matter of withdrawal from the TCA. So yes, absolutely, place that in there too. Just to recapture, my comments would be wonderful. Thank you very much.
Mayor Ward, I, I do recall Councilmember Ferguson commenting, it might have been in the recusal from closed session, but I do recall her making that comment. She did say
We can't say what she said in closed session.
Well, I'm just saying, she did say that. I don't know what, in what context, but regarding this issue, that was a comment. I, I do recall her hearing her say
Okay, well, we're not going to talk about closed session comments.
Another reason to which she didn't state, but she did say that.
But Councilmember Ferguson, are you under the assumption that you are an alternate on the Transportation Corridor Agency Board?
I was before, yes. Not now, but I was, yes. But, but still, Mayor Ward, anyone can write me. You know, you don't, just because you're reps on the board doesn't mean that someone at another agency can't write me. They can write who they wish, and I mentioned that at the meeting. I did indicate First Amendment right. People can contact anyone at agencies that they would like to, and as you know, I didn't, I didn't respond, but I could have, but I didn't. You can't control people's speak-free speech to want to talk to other elected officials in other agencies. There's no written rule that says TCA only has to speak with you and Mayor Potem James that I'm aware of, is there?
It's called the Brown Act, and if they're talking to you about issues that the, the subcommittee of the city council that we voted on, if they're talking, in addition to talking to us, they are talking to a majority of the council, and that is a Brown Act.
That one email was a Brown Act violation? I didn't perceive that as being a Brown Act violation?
They were talking to you, and that's what I said, but what
The CEO wrote me an email, wrote me an email, and I didn't respond. That's the only email ever that has been written, and he's entitled to do that. There was no substance that was discussed, and I didn't write back, and I didn't write back, so.
Well, your comments aren't, doesn't represent the facts that we have, that we have an email from you actually to the CEO of TCA. It's not that he was writing you back, you contacted him.
I wrote an email to, I think it was Peggy Huang and Samuel Johnson, CEO, and there may have been one other person. I don't have it in front of me, but Mayor Potem James read it at the meeting, so I let them know how the vote was on the letter that you had sent them, and it was a four-to-one vote, and I'm entitled to do that. And he wrote me back. I can't recall, but I didn't write back, as you know. I didn't engage further. I just wanted to put it on the record. That's all. I wrote my email.
All right, point of order, let's, let's move on.
Yes, I agree. So, we can't add anything to the minutes that we did not, that weren't spoken, spoken and not heard, but on that item before it gets moved, Madam Clerk, there's just a, a typo on page six A one, the last paragraph, the second sentence, it says reviewed the bases, it bases. It's just a typo.
Mm-hmm.
Is it? Oh, for plural. Thank you very much.
Well, Mayor Ward, I, I oppose your desire to not include my minutes, my statements. I find it discriminatory that other members get their comments in here verbatim, and I don't. So there's two sections here tonight that you're all going to be voting on these minutes to pass them that don't reflect my statements from that meeting. I'm able.
Point of order.
Yes.
Throwing out a word, discriminatory, that's, that's inflammatory, I think, and if you're going to throw that word out, please define what discriminatory is.
And I do, I believe there was one time I actually wanted to change a vote, and, you know, we went through that, and the council reiterated that we do not change what actually happened. The minutes are just what was said, not actions taken. So, was, I believe that was only Councilmember Ferguson that pulled that item. Will you move that item?
I'll, I'll move it for us to vote on. Yes, I'll move the item, but I'm not, I'm not voting to pass them, so, the minutes as they are. But I'll move it to take a vote.
Sure. Moved by Councilmember Ferguson and a second by Councilmember Duncan to accept the minutes?
And then we need to vote on it.
Yes.
To accept them as written or accepted with the two changes?
We, none, none of the city council moved to provide any changes to it.
Right. Except as written.
Okay.
Under discussion, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Will next meetings' minutes reflect that Councilwoman Ferguson objected to, to the
It will in the, I believe, the vote. It will be in the vote for this council meeting.
The way it is right now, if Councilmember Ferguson wants to make a motion to amend the minutes with, to expand her comments on the, in, in response to Mayor Potem James' comments, and to state that her reason for recusal was because she believes it represents a gift of public funds, and then if that fails, then at least that's in the minutes.
Okay.
The motion is to, to accept the minutes as prepared.
Okay, that, thank you, City Clerk, and that is my motion to amend the minutes based on the comments I had indicated tonight that had been stated at those, that meeting for those two items.
I think that'd be, excuse me, I think that'd be a substitute motion to Councilmember Duncan's motion to approve them as presented. Was that?
Well, I thought the original motion was to approve as, as presented, so this is a substitute motion to Councilmember Ferguson's original motion, I thought.
Um, we were moving it to go to a vote, so I didn't, I didn't, wasn't motioning to accept them, but I am making a motion to amend them. Thank you.
Is there any second?
Madam, Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm inclined to second it, but because I don't recall precisely if it was this meeting or another meeting, which we will not discuss, I, I will remain silent on the issue.
Thank you, and I think you have to because you weren't here.
You weren't at that meeting.
You weren't at this meeting.
At the last, at the last council meeting. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, I just, I was thinking about that. So, okay, so, I'm not seeing a second on that motion. It fails, and is there a substitute motion?
I motion move, approve the minutes as written.
Second?
Second by Mayor Potem James.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
No.
Councilmember Knoblock?
Aye.
Mayor Potem James?
Aye.
And Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Actually, if I could change my vote to an abstention, since I wasn't here, I probably shouldn't vote on it at all, so please record my vote as an abstention, Madam Clerk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion carries, let's see.
Three?
Three.
One, one.
Yes, that's right.
Three, one, two, or one, one?
Three, one, one.
Okay, the next item. I think it's E.
It is E, and that was pulled by Mayor Potem James, Councilmember Duncan, and Councilmember Ferguson.
And, and just for the public, that's a contract amendment to the contract for design and construction support for the City Hall second floor Sheriff's Department Substation should also include design and construction support for new council chambers.
So Mayor, Councilmembers, I'll start. I know Manuel Gomez is here as well, and he can provide technical detail, but to give you a little bit of an overview of how we got to this point, I think would be appropriate. As you just, as you know, we've discussed this with actually previous councils in terms of the potential of looking for a new location for our council chambers. As you are aware, one hundred Presidio has been listed for sale, and during the pandemic, we learned that that council chambers was no longer safe from a COVID perspective because of the very small quarters that it was in for social distancing, et cetera. We originally talked about the feasibility of looking at some alternative locations, such as the community center being converted to a council chambers. We talked about the possibility of building a community, or excuse me, a council chamber at the Vista Hermosa Sports Park. If you recall, we had indicated originally in the Vista Hermosa Sports Park Master Plan, there was an identification for a community meeting room and performing arts type of thing, and so we thought might be a nexus there. However, as we were doing the construction of the second floor substation, and the council may recall this as well, we had a 5,000-square-foot, give or take, footprint that was not going to be utilized by the Orange County Sheriff's Department. At the time, our former Public Works Director, Tom Bonniget, mentioned possibility of an EOC or some other alternatives for that space. However, we didn't get direction to do that. We focused on the substation as council had directed. But based on staff's review of the site and talking to Ginsler, who is currently on contract with the city to provide the design for the second floor substation, we found it that, found that that's 5,000 square feet was very feasible to have a council chambers that could involve the appropriate spacing and social distancing and have the conference room for closed session. And so, from, from the standpoint of the lowest-cost option to the city, we don't have to buy the building. We own the building. The, the room is an empty shell, and we already have a contractor on the floor doing the improvements to the substation. I want to note that we won't be able to use that contractor via change order for California Public Works Contract Code, but with Ginsler on board currently, it seemed to myself and the staff that this was the right time to look at doing this and making that our permanent home for our chambers moving forward. So tonight, before you, you have the recommendation to do an amendment to Ginsler's contract for Ginsler to do the construction drawings and specifications, so Public Works could go out to bid for the project, and then, of course, we would have to come back to the city council for the execution and award of that bid. And so with that, I will, I will stop my presentation and take any questions, and I know Manuel is here as well that can address any issues.
Any council member would like to make any comment or ask a question?
So, yes, so, if we were to, and Mr. Gomez or Mr. City Manager, either one, just round numbers, if, let's say hypothetically, we would build something from the ground up Vista Hermosa Park, you know, much in, in the vein of what you described, a multi-use sort of, sort of facility, we talking four, $5 million there?
I'm going to lean on Manuel a little bit, but I would tell you that because of the Vista Hermosa architecture, the Spanish architectural outlay, we would want to obviously blend in with that, and I would suspect, and on the size and scope, that we would probably be looking anywhere, and please, this is a soft number, I would suspect we'd be anywhere between five to $12 million for new construction.
Mr. Gomez, you, you concur with that?
I do, Mayor Potem. Starting from scratch, building a new building, ensuring that there's adequate utilities, all would drive that cost probably to the higher range of what Mr. Sun just mentioned.
Thank you, sir. So, as a result of the JPIA judging our, our old chambers is not inhabitable due to COVID concerns, and what would you, you know, so there's, there's no, there's no going back there. What would we anticipate the cost to rounding out that 5,000 square feet into acceptable council chambers?
I'm going to defer to our interim Public Works Director, Mr. Gomez.
Like I said, the manager, Sun, although we don't have any estimated cost yet prepared by our architect, our staff did a takeoff based on the current cost that we are experiencing for the substation construction, and we think it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.5 to 1.8 million dollars.
Could we use what was eight point nine, I guess, seven point eight, or, or whatever it is. I keep on forgetting the name of the money that is just the federal government's just printing, sending to us.
American Rescue Plan.
Thank you, sir. The, can we use any of those funds to, to complete the project?
So, we believe so. We are going through the 150 pages of the Treasurer's Office issued in terms of guidelines, and I will say there are a lot of guidelines and different things that we and all agencies will have to adhere to, but at the end of the day, the main nexus with those federal dollars is whether you were affected by revenue, by the impact of COVID, or COVID itself impacting you, those are the true nexuses for the utilization of those dollars. And so, as we've talked about, the, the building is no longer applicable based on COVID social distancing standards, and so we believe there would be a nexus to use some of those dollars to offset the construction cost. But again, those are our preliminary reviews, and we haven't gone through the guidelines with a fine-tooth comb at this point.
And it should be important to note that the current police services station that, that we are building, that was in, in, those funds already existed in a special account, I believe, the public safety capital account, or?
Yes, it was a public safety mitigation fee that the City of San Clemente had collected, and, and the primary purpose of that collection of those developer impact fees were for the construction of a new police or fire station based on the growth of San Clemente, and so this substation that we're in the midst of construction with had a complete nexus to use those public safety mitigation dollars so that it wasn't an impact of the general fund.
So, so, going back to general fund, so we're, we're currently building the current station, the, the new station, I should say, the current project, without any impact on the general fund.
That is correct.
And in all likelihood, to, to finish the, the second floor out with cha, council chambers, we're probably not going, we're, in all likelihood, we're not going to have an impact on the general fund there.
That is, that is our intent, Mayor Potem.
Kind of mayor, that, that concludes my question.
Councilmember Duncan?
I had some similar questions, one additional. As we sit here in the community center, obviously, this is a potential option for continued council chambers. Can you opine on the feasibility of using the community center or any other existing public facility as council chambers rather than, you know, constructing our own to alleviate any concerns there?
Yeah, so, our former Public Works Director, Tom Bonniget, and myself have discussed and reviewed this. Because of the age of this building and a number of, you know, aging infrastructures, again, there's probably most likely asbestos in this building because of the age of when it was built. The cost to rehabilitate or remodel this facility to be a council chambers would probably exceed the cost for us to re, or not redo, but build the council chambers on the second floor. And number two, the one thing about the community center that's very dear to the community is we host a number of nonprofits on a regular basis in this community center. Now, granted, currently, the community center and all community centers are closed because of the pandemic. I know our nonprofits, when June 15th runs, comes around, will be hosting a number of those events, and so balancing this room as a community center and a council chambers, I feel that if you wanted to convert this to a council chambers, you'd be talking about where do we create a new community center to host those community groups. And so, again, with the fact that this building is old, and probably a lot of things that we wouldn't know of until we get into the destruction rehabilitation would be costly, we felt it was more cost-effective to do the second floor at the Cai Negocio Facility.
Thank you, City Manager Sun.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Excellent work. Well, I, I object to building anything new right now for the council chambers. We meet twice a month. The auditorium has, you know, works well. Once we can let the audience come in, full audience, sit down. I'm not sure if they're there tonight, but we have AV audiovisual system that was purchased, according to City Manager Sun last August, and we're going to open up fully in September, but didn't. So, at this time, you know, we're, we're, we don't have this budgeted. It's not the current fiscal year budget, and this is just the design cost of 176,000. That sounds really high for just a portion of the second floor. I, if we did pursue it, once we do have a new budget cycle and it's placed in the budget appropriately, then I'd like to get other quotes from, instead of 176,000. Again, that sounds really high for design cost of, of this section of the building. But I just, I just can't support doing that at this time. You know, we, we're coming out of the coming out of the, we're pretty much out of COVID. Tomorrow, we're going to be going that least restrictive tier, the yellow tier. But there's just so many unknowns still. And, you know, we speak a lot about these revenue enhancements we have to make. And yet, we have $176 of unbudgeted funds that we're looking to potentially approve tonight. So anyhow, I think we should just keep what we have going for now and wait on this, at least till the budget workshop where we can discuss this in more detail and, and vote on what we're going to prioritize in the new fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ferguson.
I also have a few, few comments.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm glad this matter was pulled by three of my colleagues because I was going to pull it, but it didn't bother when everyone else was. My concern on this item is that this is the first time I've heard that the space at Cali Negocio would be considered as a possible city hall. And to be now asked tonight to, to spend money on design plans, when I haven't seen any analysis on any other possible location. I've heard that this is a possible location. I'm not sure that the cost is all that great. I mean, if you, if we put temporary podium or dais here that could be rolled back so that the stage could continue to be used, I can't imagine that would be very expensive. We have a huge room where seating could be placed at, at a practically no cost. And while the building is older, it's a classic building, and we pride ourselves on old buildings in this town. So I, I don't know that that'd be problematic at all. And if we need a community center for scheduling, we could use, we've got 5,400 square feet or in Cali Negocio that could easily be made into a large room for community as, as an option if, if we couldn't schedule around it. But I, I suspect that scheduling nonprofits in here around our meetings would not be that difficult. So my, my concern is that I'm being asked to move forward. And once we spend this money on, on this issue, we're moving forward. We're not, we're not discussing anymore. This is what we've selected. And this is my first opportunity to look at it. So I'm concerned about that. Two items regarding the contract itself, I'm, I'm going to be opposing it, but just in terms of the contract, the contract states that this contract would be extended to February 3, 2022. This isn't a consulting contract for, for services over time. This is a, this would be a site specific contract. So, so the contract should be, if it's awarded, should be awarded for a purpose. And if there's any timeframe, it should be that the time, that the analysis needs to be completed within a timeframe, not that the contract only extends to a timeframe. My second concern was that in section, page 60, 58 and 61 of the temporary design of the council chambers, the dais has seven, seven seats. And I would think that it would probably be more appropriate to design those for five council members. But that was just an observation. So that concludes my comments, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so I'll make a comment. I think staff in, in looking at what could happen in that space that's, that's already available on the second floor with the sheriff's substation already under construction, we save a lot of money with, it's already under construction and the, the contractor's already there. We have people already overseeing that construction. We, there's a lot of money that we save in adding our council chambers now. We've all, since we've been out of the other chambers, we've always needed to find another one. I disagree that I think this, this building works for us. It's very different than all of us sitting at the dais together, looking each other in the eye. Our staff is across the room and the public is, is over on the side. Speaking as the mayor, it's actually, it's very difficult. And it's not ideal. And we need to remember that our council chambers aren't just for us. They also support our planning commission meetings and our hearings. And we need to get back, we need to get back to, to normal situations where we're operating at optimum. And this has been a good solution, but it's not optimum for, for what we need. I, I disagree on that this is a great place, but I, I actually think staff found an outstanding issue because I was really worried about it. I thought we were going to have to find something at Vista Hermosa and spend so much more money. And that was really going to take a lot of capital. This is a solution that staff came up with that isn't going to take a lot of capital. It's the most economic way to get council chambers a professional center again, for all of us to have our meetings at. Meetings of the council and the planning commission and our hearings are all very important to, to operating the city. And so I'm actually going to be for it. And I, this community center needs to be returned, you know, to the people. But I think mostly, we need to get back to normal.
Madam Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
Unless, council member?
No, that, I just wanted to make a quick comment of what I, I thought of it. And I, I think we found a, a good solution. And I applaud staff for doing that because it's, it's economically good for the, the city and solves our issue of, of a council chambers very well.
Well, I'll just close out by saying I actually shared many of the concerns that Councilmember Ferguson raised, very valid concerns, and Councilmember Noblock as well. Very, I, I really scrutinized this a lot and put the city manager and staff to it. And they really answered all of my concerns. And, and a lot of it was what you just said, Mayor Ward. So I'm going to be supporting as well after having some serious concerns when I first saw it.
Same here. I mean, I, I've asked some very pointed questions on this, and I concur with the mayor's comments. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve and authorize city manager to execute amendment number one, the contract C20-12 by and between the City of San Clemente and Ginsler to include design and construction support for a new council chambers on the second floor of City Hall located in 910 Cali Negocio. This amendment increases the contract amount from $265,350 to $441,350, an increase of $176,000, and extends the term of the contract to February 3, 2022. And two, approve a supplemental appropriation the amount of $176,000 to account 001-203-45800.
Second.
Under discussion of, of the motion?
Yes.
Could I ask, make of the motion to consider an amendment to that motion to, to not have this service contract have a date certain to end the contract? This, the motion included the, the contract goes until February 3. This isn't, this is a, this is a contract for a specific assignment to design a building, whether it takes six months or two years, it shouldn't be time specific.
I'm perfectly fine with that. I accept that currently.
That's okay. All right. So with that amendment, second by Councilmember Duncan.
That's fine.
Councilmember Duncan?
I.
Councilmember Ferguson?
No.
Councilmember Noblock?
No.
Mayor Potem James?
Aye.
Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Motion carries three to two.
Mayor, if I may interrupt really quick, we've just learned that our YouTube live stream is not working. It is an issue with YouTube. I'm also led to believe the City of Dana Point is having the same issue. We're trying to rectify it, but for those in the audience that are watching, they can go to our Cox channel and see it live on our Cox channel. It's just not being live on our YouTube channel at this point. And if it does come up during the meeting, I will communicate to the council that it's back up. But I wanted to make the public aware of that.
All right. Thank you for that notice to the council and the public. And I would like to make a point of order. Can you ask staff to adjust the?
Yes.
Air conditioning? Because I believe that the audience is also cold. Thank you. So Madam Clerk, our next item?
Next item is item J. That's ratification of emergency construction contract for the Beach Trail Bridge Shoring Project.
Okay, and that was pulled by Councilmember Duncan.
Yes, I think it was Mayor Potem James and I. Yeah, I, I had the opportunity to discuss this with our interim Public Works Director. And, you know, if we recall, we voted to kind of put off making a long-term decision about potentially replacing the Areposa Bridge, which Public Works Director Bonniget had recommended a few meetings ago. And the idea was to see how much life we could get out of the bridge. We were all very disappointed that this bridge that was supposed to last well into the future, as we